... invocation will be given by Reverend A.B. Sawyer, Associate Pastor at First Baptist Church.
[inaudible] To go to the funeral remark, this is six few and ten days late church. I was at the visitation and I said, "I've got the lead now, I'm going to do the prayer." And two people said, "Tell our council we love and appreciate it." I don't know how you get told that. So I delivered a message and uh...
Did they love me too?
That wasn't the same phone calls we were getting from that church there about three weeks ago.
Well, we did.
That's fine.
We appreciate it. Let's do pray. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ, thanking you again for your great love for us. We've gone on to talk about how much you love us and how you exemplify that. We thank you again for these precious folks that have served as our councilman, mayor. We pray that you'd extend your grace to them even tonight. Pray that you'd bless their families. And Lord, we realize they've got other activities and jobs and they come here. And I just pray that you give them a clear mind and a passionate, passionate heart for the great leadership that they can provide for our city and our community. We thank you for them and we pray that you would again govern everything that goes on here tonight and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Appreciate that Reverend Sawyer. Thank you for being here. Okay, council, as mentioned there at the end of the work session, I would like to ask for a motion to add an executive session to the end of tonight's, and we'll put it after public participation. That would be item 29, I'm sorry, I want to add as item, before we get to public participation. So it'll be item 28, I would like to ask for you to consider the resolution to make the improvements to the Quail Creek clubhouse. And then 29 would be public participation. And then item 30 would be executive session. Can I entertain a motion to amend the agenda as stated so moved?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor to amend the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Agenda is amended as stated. Thank you, council. First order of business will be to, our second order of business, that will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on the 20th of December 2018. Do you have any changes to those minutes, council? Additions, deletions? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve them as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Thank you. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. The state school report card is out and all Fairhope schools got an A this year. Last year only Fairhope Middle received an A and still they improved on this. The elementary school went from an 83 to a 97. The high school went from 87 to 92. Intermediate school, 88 to 94. Middle school, 92 to 93. And J. Larry Newton, from 89 to 92. Baldwin County schools overall averaged 85 percent, placing in the top 25 percent of the state. All Fairhope schools surpassed the county average. We are leading the way in education. I'm extremely proud of the teachers and students who worked so hard for this outstanding achievement. Congratulations. And we have been advised that the water tank contractor has contacted the phone companies, the cell phone companies, to let them know that they are cleared to replace their cell towers. I know this is very, very good news on the water tank. It is now up to the phone companies to get that work done and all have been informed when they can start. And if you have any further questions in the future, we can happily say, "Contact the cell phone carrier." The State of the City is scheduled for Thursday, January 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at the Civic Center. Everyone is invited to this expo event where our residents can meet one-on-one with our department heads, council members, and me. Learn what our departments do, get answers to your most pressing questions, and sign up to receive a free recycle bin. Refreshments will be served along with some surprises and giveaways. You are encouraged to come and learn more about your government in this fun and informal At the State of the City, we will also unveil the full five-minute version of a documentary about the City of Fairhope resilience work. Here is a quick 30-second excerpt I'd like to show you now.
Health of these gullies serve our citizens in ways that many of us don't even understand.
It's a community that's concerned that they're kind of losing their own kind of historic community because the property around them is being developed in a way that they don't have any ability to afford to stay in their community.
This plan is the basis for strengthening channels of communication and trust among city staff, city officials, and residents. This trust is the backbone of a successful resilience plan and is required for any community to adapt to increasing flood risks created by sea level rise.
Community engagement is one of the most important things we're doing. These are human lives that will be affected by all the decisions that we make. We have kind of put the gullies on the back burner as far as maintaining them and making sure that they last long into the future for what they're there for. So, you know, this project is going to teach us, hopefully, how we can make these watersheds more resilient.
Of course, we had a lot of sponsors and contributors to this little documentary and we'll have that available in its full on the 24th and then we'll also put it online. Now we have, is Luanne Crawford here? Okay. A proclamation for National Mentoring Month.
We're giving a proclamation for the National Mentoring Month, whereas our community has a number of individuals who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds of success. And whereas we would like to show appreciation for these individuals and encourage other citizens of Fairhope to become mentors. And mentors are an important part of the mentoring movement where we wish to show that children engaged in one-on-one professional supportive mentoring programs are more likely to finish high school and less likely to begin using drugs, alcohol, skip school, or be involved in violence. And whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month where American citizens are called upon to recognize the importance of mentoring, to look for opportunities to serve as mentors in their communities and observe this month with appreciative activities and programs. Now therefore, I, Karen Wilson, as mayor of the City of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2019 as Mentoring Month for the City of Fairhope. Thank you so much for calling your line, mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Sure.
The Rotary Youth Center here in Fairhope has a lot of mentoring programs available and I think they're getting ready to start one here pretty soon if you're interested. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a round of applause for that as well.
Yes.
I think I was daydreaming when we should have done that. Okay, we'll move on to public participation regarding agenda items. If you would like to speak to agenda items five, and then we'll skip over the public hearings because you will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearings for items six through nine. So item five and items 10 through 30, it is now. So if you, you'll be limited to three minutes maximum. This is pertaining to agenda items only, so the floor is open. If you'd like to address the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jim Peck from 413 Isaiah. Want to plug, put a plug in for item 15, which is around about on 44 and 13. The reason I want to tell you that, I got T-boned right at that corner and then a week later they had another wreck before they put a four-way stop. So it's fast, you can put one in there, the benefit of everybody going 14 to 13 because they, so I just want to put a plug in for that.
I want to second that. My mother-in-law got T-boned there too.
Did she? Yeah. It could have been worse. I could have hit her in the wrong place and she ran the stop sign. But go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Items five and then, yes sir, if you'll come to the podium.
I was expecting one.
Could you, yes sir, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address, sir.
My name's Don Evans.
Recognize we had a cap on, Don.
I'm sorry, I was overworking and putting some stuff in.
You were cap watched.
Yeah. I'm sorry I had to get here kind of late. But anyway, I'm Don Evans. About four years ago, we started an internet service here in Fairhope to provide internet to, high-speed internet from the major fiber companies to the local residents because there's a big need for internet in Fairhope. So we've had pretty good success and in that success, a bid came up a few months ago and that bid was for fiber connection between the city docks and the police department. And so we put in a bid and we were awarded the bid. And part of the bid that we put in was in consideration that we'd be able to rent on the water towers to provide even more service to the citizens of Fairhope and businesses of Fairhope with high-speed internet. We are the only local internet company that resides in Fairhope. We're at 402 Volanta and we're called Three Play. And my business partner is Joe Rude, who owns the beautiful house that Dr. Will Blackburn owns down by the pier. And so Joe and I put that in there and we've gone ahead and done some things toward that contract. And we met with Mr. Peterson and several of the people about doing it. We were expecting a meeting to talk about the, being able to work this out and go ahead and do something that we both agreed on and moved forward into the contract. But we never got the call back and we never got the meeting. So then we noticed this week that it was going to be removed, that we were not going to, that our award's going to be removed. So I wanted to come here tonight and ask you that will you delay that enough for us to have a meeting and talk about it and see if we could do something because we would really like to do it. It'd be good for the citizens of Fairhope. There's a lot of businesses that can't get internet and we have the ability to get it to them. And our prices are a little less than the major carriers and all. But anyway, we would ask that and just wanted to come and say that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Floor is still open. Items five and 10 through 30. Seeing no one else, we will close public participation for agenda items and remind everyone that you'll have another opportunity to address the council on other items that may or may not be on the agenda at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council, your comments, please. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just want to welcome everybody back after Christmas and New Year's break. I hope everyone had a great holiday season. We're glad to be back at work. I'm sure you are too. And I want to again, I want to say something about the schools again, touch on what the mayor, mayor's comments on the grades that came back. I don't think it can be overstated what a remarkable achievement that is and a testament to the wonderful teachers and administrators we have in our Fairhope schools. As a parent with children in two of those five schools, I am incredibly grateful for all that they do for our children. And it's, we should all be very proud of what we have here in Fairhope especially and be very thankful for our teachers and administrators and let them know how thankful we are for what they do. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Conyers?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I filled in for the mayor this past weekend at the Dogwood Trail Pageant. That was the 59th annual from the Optimist Club. And glad I wasn't a judge because there were a lot of talented people trying out and fortunately there were two from Fairhope that won and were selected to the court, which covers the entire eastern shore. And one of them was our neighbor, Lily Kate Gwen, so congratulations to her. I know that she's got two, two people in the neighborhood that are thinking they're pretty important now, all of a sudden, just living down the street. So my daughters are pretty excited. But it was, it was a great event. They had a huge crowd and just a lot of talented individuals. So they are great ambassadors for the City of Fairhope and the entire eastern shore. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I hate to continue the school discussion, but the Baldwin County got a B overall. Fairhope Schools got an A, as discussed. If you ask any of the principals, they will tell you that A was achieved with the help of the funding they received from the City of Fairhope. They would like additional funding and that's where the EAC is continuing to just talk about the special tax district to kind of spread the, spread the money coming into the city to help support the schools. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I just hope everybody had some happy holidays as I did and I would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Okay. I got a couple of things. Over the holiday break before the end of the year, we did reach an agreement with Baldwin County Board of Education to extend our offer to purchase the K-1 center by 90 days. I've had a few questions about that. But you know, we, I've also been asked if the government shutdown is affecting, I was asked if it's affecting our chances of being awarded that grant. And I wouldn't say that it's affecting our chances of being awarded that grant, but it's, but it is affecting the timing of that grant. I would have to say that that portion of the government is shut down right now. So it's a good thing that we did execute the 90-day extension. We just, we'll wait for them to reconvene and hopefully we'll get some news on that. On another note, I had the pleasure of participating in the first annual Fairhope Sunset Rotary Club. .5K for you runners out there, that's a whopping maybe 500 yards, but it's called "The Race For The Rest Of Us" and I noticed that Jay and Robert were conveniently out of town, so I guess they got scared and didn't show up because I was ready to whip them. And anyway, a great time whether you ran it or sprinted it or jogged it or walked your dog or walked backwards. It was, it was a great idea and raised a lot of money for the Rotary Youth Club here in town. And so I'm sure that that'll be bigger and even better next year. So if you didn't participate, that's, and you want to participate in a fun event, that's just about for everybody. So anyway, thank, thanks for all the people in the Sunset Rotary Club for putting on that, that great event. And with that, I'll close. Council comments? And we will move on to item five on tonight's agenda, which is an ordinance regarding annexation of property of AIC Junior Land, AI Cordy, the third family limited partnership to be known as North Hills at Fairhope, generally located on the north side of State Highway 104, approximately one and a half mile east of County Road 13 in Fairhope, Alabama, and to zone as R1 low-density single-family residential district. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Council President. This one, we have two items on the same development, just to, just to make sure we're clear about that. As you know, when you annex in property without a rezoning, it comes in automatically as R1A. When you annex in conditionally, you annex in and then have basically a rezoning hearing. So this property tonight has both of those processes and we'll take the first one first, number five on your agenda, is a request to annex the typical annexation for about 83 acres as R1. And this is just the typical annexation staff. This is part of a larger development that was reviewed by the Planning Commission, recommended approval. And again, staff recommends that the initial zoning of R1A be established on this property. This is the first reading of this. And then we'll take the next portion of this property on number six, item number six. So staff does recommend that the first rezoning be a first annexation with the typical R1 zoning be approved.
Okay. Is this the first reading of this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just, I didn't know why there wasn't a public hearing on this.
It's not a rezon.
Yeah.
It's not a rezon. It's an automatic annexation. It's coming in as R1.
Okay, so this is not a rezon, although it's unzoned because it is unzoned right now.
Right. Yes, yes, Council President. As you can see from the, from the slide here, area in yellow is the R1. Again, it is contiguous to the waters and they're coming in just through a typical annexation without any kind of conditional rezoning or anything else like that.
Is not required.
No, sir, that's right. And the area in yellow is indeed the area that they wish to bring into the city under R1, which is typical. And then the area in the middle we'll discuss on item number six.
It's extremely rare that we see these applications, so I'm kind of excited about it. So clerk, is it customary if the ordinance is introduced to let it lay over for, you know, just this straight annexation?
Yes, any ordinance like that.
Okay. I want to ask somebody to introduce the ordinance if I could, please.
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Now, council, do you have any questions for Mr. Dias? I just want to point out 81 lots on 83.33 acres, so you know, a density of slightly greater than one acre per lot. We've, we get a lot of comments on the Planning Commission and just, I'm happy to see, I'm happy to see something coming in as R1 for once. So with no questions or no motions being made, we'll let this lay over until the next council meeting. We'll take it up for final adoption. Any other comments on this? Okay. All right. Thank you. Item number six is a public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253. A request is on the property of AIC Junior Land, AI Cordy, the third family limited partnership to R2 medium-density single-family residential district concurrent with annexation into the City of Fairhope. This property is generally located on the north side of State Highway 104, approximately one and a half mile east of County Road 13 in Fairhope, Alabama. Property to be known as North Hills at Fairhope. Mr. Dias?
Council President, this is, this is the development, same development. The area that's shaded in brown or pink is a conditional annexation. They have requested R2, which is our medium-density zoning category. I think the density of this internal area is about 2.3 units per acre, making the entire development, including the area that's, that's R2, the overall density would be about 1.16 units per acre for the entire development. This application was heard by the Planning Commission. This conditional rezoning, it was recommended for approval. Staff does also recommend approval. And again, this is a first reading, again, a conditional annexation for the central part of this development because it's slightly higher density than the R1. Again, the density is 2.3 units per acre for this internal portion, creating an overall density for the entire development of 1.16 units per acre.
So that was the 112 total, 96, roughly 97 acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me ask you this, is this, it's kind of a crazy question, but I think it has to be asked, could, could we accept the, you know, the ordinance on item five, but, and then reject item six? I'm not suggesting that we do that, but because they are separate, what would the applicant do in that case?
That's a great question. They're here, made me answer that question. I think if that were the case, then we would have a central portion of this that would remain unzoned. The first, first approved, it is contiguous, there's no issues with the annexation. If the second item did not, were not passed, it wouldn't, you would have an area internal to this development that would remain in, under incorporated Baldwin County, basically an island inside this development.
Right. Yeah. I'm not suggesting that, council, but it just is, that's one of those, it's a kind of a new, a unique situation.
It is.
I have not seen yet.
And Council President, just want to make, you know, when you look at the overall density, it's, it's only 1.16 even including that R2 in there. So we felt that overall, this is a fairly low-density development. And speaking to the applicant and the developer, it's going to be very similar to the waters, which I believe is a very nice development, turned out very nice. It will be adjacent to the waters and so we're, we felt like that was appropriate for this, this rezoning and conditional annexation.
So about 30, looks like 31 lots on 16 acres. Oh, that's, that's an average of almost a half an acre per lot.
Right.
Right there. I mean, and the minimum lot size in R2 is 10,500 and that's averaging 20,000 square feet a lot.
That's correct. And we, and the, from the very beginning, we met with them numerous times before they applied. They were very diligent about working with staff on a variety of issues, including utilities and land use. And it was a very easy process, I believe. They, they took our suggestions and so forth and it was, it was a nice process to go through to reach, we believe to be a nice development.
Okay. Counsel, before I ask one of you to introduce this ordinance, I do want to point out that in your package, I believe there's a slight typo in there. It should be amended in your, in your package to be written, the first sentence there should be written, "Request is, is on the property of AIC Junior Land, AI Cordy, the third family limited partnership to R2 medium-density." There was a portion of that family limited partnership that may have been left out. Explain that, clerk.
The first publication and second publication prior to this coming to council, the deed had it as AIC Junior Land, AI Cordy the Third, FLP. It was advertised as just AI Cordy the Third, who is one of the signers on, in this. So it needs to be amended to read the correct name that's on the deed.
Okay. Which is that first sentence there, correct?
Yes.
So do we need to ask for that to be amended before it's introduced?
Because it was published as AI Cordy the Third, it needs to be changed.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to amend the ordinance as stated by the clerk.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. So clerk, as you stated, if you'll just amend that. Now I'll ask somebody to introduce the ordinance as amended.
I'll go ahead and introduce it.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dias? Okay. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this item, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Mr. Dias, you may want to stay close. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any final comments, council? Okay. Hearing none, we'll let this lay over until the next council meeting for final adoption. Item number seven is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253. A request is on the property of Billy LLC to R2 medium-density single-family residential district concurrent with annexation into the City of Fairhope. This property is generally located on the south side of State Highway 104, approximately one and a half mile east of County Road 13, Fairhope, Alabama.
Council President, I'm going to ask Mike Jeffries from our staff. Mike's been on our staff for about six months. He's going to present this one for us.
Okay.
Evening, City Council. Council President.
Hey, Mike.
Like Wayne said, my name's Mike Jeffries, planning technician with the City of Fairhope. And what we have before you this evening is zoning case 18.09. The property is the south side of Highway 104, approximately a half mile east of County Road 13, just south of the previous case. Actually, that you just heard, and it's a conditional annexation to R2. The project size is 35 acres and it's currently unzoned. The engineer of record is Dewberry. Planning Commission recommended approval at its October 1st meeting unanimously. Based on the R2-sized lots of 4.15 density at a minimum of 10,500 square feet, you could get approximately 145 lots could be placed on the 35 acres. However, due to some natural features, there is a blue stream part of Fly Creek that runs through the middle of this property that kind of hinders the ability to develop the site. A possible proposed conceptual sketch shows that the lot can accommodate approximately 45 acres, which would then give it a density of about 1.29, very similar to the, very similar to this property that is, well, was just before you. And I had a map that does not look like, maybe it didn't make it to the slide, that showed, showed the general location and the zoning of it. But just to the south of the property is Pecan Ridge, which is subdivision that is zoned R2. The possible future neighborhood to the north, which would be zoned R2. To the east, you have Country Woods and Hollowbrook subdivision, which are both zoned R1. We'd be taking an unzoned parcel of land into a parcel that can be more regulated to help try to protect the character of the surrounding neighborhood and control the density level. Staff recommends that the requested conditional annexation be approved to R2 as we did to the Planning Commission meeting. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And council, I'll just point out that when you see a plat in there, that's, that's not binding at all. That's just, that's just kind of a representative plat, so don't take that as a, as a site plan.
The site plan that's on there, or the sketch that is on there is just a possibility kind of showing a general configuration of what could possibly be done on the site. kind of showing a general configuration of what could possibly done on the site.
Any questions for Mike, Counsel? Okay. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay, neither one, Jimmy or Kevin, maybe Kevin. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to item seven, the annexation and rezoning of this property, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. An easy crowd tonight. James, jump up and say something. It's for the heck of it. Boring. All right. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. Turn it back over to Counsel. Do you have any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing nothing further. We'll let this lay over for consideration for final adoption to the next council meeting. All right. Item number eight is a public hearing. This is an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 1253. A request is on the property of the Bills Number Two LLC to R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District concurrent with annexation into the City of Fairhope. This property is generally located on the west side of Lawrence Road, approximately one quarter, one quarter mile north of Gaver Avenue in Fairhope, Alabama.
Thank you, Counsel President. This again is another conditional annexation and with a request to rezone to R2. It's about 53.93 acres. It is north of North Station and is adjoining North Station, actually. And it has an access through North Station, but also out to a road that is to the east, which I don't have my glasses and I can't read what it says, what road that is. I apologize. Lawrence Road, I'm sorry, I couldn't read it on my, on my map. Again, this is two lots. This was heard by the Planning Commission. They recommend approval. Staff also recommends approval. When you look at the compatibility analysis, this fit in with that. A lot of the neighborhoods around this property is R1, but when we looked at the lot sizes and so forth, the lot sizes are more of an R2 type standard. It was our understanding that some of these developments were annexed in just as a normal annexation, which they get the R1 and did not request anything different. So it looks like we have some developments that although they're R1, they, their development pattern and their size is consistent with R2. And so, again, we looked at this property and recommended R2 for this as well. We had a, at the last Planning Commission meeting, we had a pretty interesting discussion about the difference between R1 and R2 and the advantages of coming into the city when you have unzoned property. And so, I think this is, it was one of those situations where R2 gives, makes it more advantageous to come into the city, which we're, which we are encouraging. And R1 does not provide those advantages. And so, again, we would, again, recommend approval of this annexation and rezoning. And this is first reading.
Did, did you have an anticipated, I'm looking through here very quickly, compatibility analysis in there, anticipated density. Once again, Counsel, if you're looking at your package on page eight, there's just, there's some plats shown, but those are, are not binding. There looks to be, you know, maybe a, looks to be a fair amount of wetlands there on the back of these lots and also going between the two lots. Is that correct?
There is, yes, sir. There is a, a, a great, not a great deal. There are wetlands that does inhibit the development, development aspect of this property. And also, the wetlands kind of bisect the lot, so you have access through two different roads, which kind of creates two separate neighborhoods that don't have access to one another because of those wetlands. There is, in the back of your packet, there is a proposed layout, a, with a rezoning process, we, there is a request to provide just a conceptual layout, does not, it's not binding, as was said before, and that layout, as you can see, has quite a bit, quite a bit of green space, and also it has the retention ponds and so forth required for drainage and, and those kind of things.
And if I look at that plat on the right, and once again, it's non-binding, Wayne, that retention pond, or detention it could be, that I see in that depiction there, that is not in, that's outside of the wetlands, so that green space that I see is, is, does not encroach upon that, that wetland. So they would meet their 10% green space outside of the wetlands?
Yes, sir, I believe so. That's something we'll look at very closely as we go forward to the development process. But you see the little dotted line there? I believe that's probably a wetland delineation.
Looks like it.
Yep, and so, and so we'll actually ensure that they, that the wetlands are protected. And as you know, we require signs be posted and so forth for wetlands on, on all those properties that are developed as part of our subdivision regulations. And we'll monitor that very, very closely as far as any kind of construction material and so forth. We require BMPs and all those type of, of things that goes in there.
Yeah, so my point being with the wetlands, you're going to have a natural buffer there. And, and although we don't count it as green space, you're going to have naturally, you're going to have even, probably a greater portion of green space than you may have in certain developments.
That, and that's.
Which would decrease the density considerably.
That's right, that's right. And, you know, we, we looked at, we looked at some of the surrounding developments. We mentioned earlier about North Station, some of the developments, and what their densities were. And it looks like, for example, North Station is 2.48 units per acre, and, and, and others 2.9. So although they are, they're zoned R1, if you look at their development density that's on the ground, it's, it's more than R1. And that's why we, you know, we want to be consistent, but also we want to be consistent with the development patterns that are out there. And we feel like that R2 was a consistent development pattern. But as been pointed out, we don't expect that to be, the density to be at that level of R2. The, typically the rezoning is primarily for the lot sizes. And when you're working with wetlands and so forth, you almost get what's called a conservation development or a cluster development, where you want to cluster your development away from those natural features like wetlands and, and those things that we want to protect. And so, in essence, I think what we'll wind up with is more of a cluster type development with a little bit smaller lots, but also being removed away from the wetlands.
Where are we, Clerk? Do we introduce this yet?
Has not been introduced.
Okay, I'll ask for somebody to introduce the ordinance, please.
Introduce it. I'll introduce it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this request, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll let this lay over for final consideration at our next meeting. Okay, item nine is a public hearing. This is an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 1253. A request to rezone the property of Eva M. Rayly from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to B2 General Business District. This property, property is generally located at 814 North Greeno Road, Fairhope, Alabama. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Counsel President. This is a little bit unique here. As you know, the Council instituted a moratorium on Greeno Road for rezonings and site plan approvals. This is on Greeno Road, but it was submitted back in August. And so, the moratorium was for new applications because this was, this was submitted in August. It's vested to continue through the process. So that's what's on your agenda tonight. This property is 1.2 acres. They're requesting B2. Some, this is a little bit unique because it's between two PUDs that have been approved and two existing PUDs. The Hyatt PUD, which is to the north, and the Park Place PUD, which is to the south. And I want to go to those. This is, on the screen now is the Hyatt PUD, and it's been approved for, I guess, about three years now, a commercial PUD with commercial uses and so forth in it. And then, the one on your screen now is the Park Place PUD, again, a series of commercial office space, things like that. On these, I believe, drive-throughs were limited to banks and pharmacies and so forth. This property is right between these two uses. And so, when you look at the B2 compatibility, because it is between two PUDs, the size of this is 1.2 acres, so that they don't qualify for a PUD. Normally, we'd say, hey, if you're between two PUDs, go ahead and submit for your PUD. However, the size limits them. They don't meet the minimum lots, minimum size for a PUD. So when we looked at this, we looked at the compatibility with the, with the approved uses in those, the Hyatt PUD and the Park Place PUD. On your screen now, you can see the Hyatt PUD approved uses, sandwich shop, coffee shop, so on. You can see all those fuel service stations aren't, are not permitted. And then, for the Greeno Road PUD, those are the listed uses that were approved there. And again, there are some limitations on some of the drive-throughs and so forth. That, that all being said, staff recommends this, this 1.2 acres be approved. We recommend approval to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission went a little further and recommended, and we recommended approval restrict, but with a restriction on drive-through lanes and windows. The Planning Commission went a little further than that with their recommendation, and their recommendations were approval of the B2 General Business District zoning. But they, they recommended parking should be in the rear of the building, drive-through lanes and windows are prohibited, and no automobile repair shops would be allowed. And so that was their recommendation that we brought forward. I think we concur with those. We don't have any problem with that recommendation. Again, summarize, they recommended that it be approved with parking in the rear, drive-through lanes, and drive-throughs are prohibited, and also automobile repair shops prohibited. Be glad to answer any questions.
Can I get someone to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to just say, Counsel, very quickly, that, and I still, there was some disagreement at the Planning Commission as far as the, the Park Place and the drive-throughs that were allowed. I was under the understanding that no drive-throughs were allowed, and, and it's been stated that it was only drive-throughs for restaurants. But I really want you to research that and, you know, on another time and not debate that. But I do want to just point out, Counsel, that for this, the recommendation was approved with the following conditions, and that would be all drive-through lanes and windows are prohibited. And of course, the automobile repair and parking shall be in the rear. And I also want to say that I think that it makes sense for, and they, they're, you know, the, the owners are, I think, being very accommodating and allowing that recommendation to move forward and didn't resist that. But it only makes sense that this, that this be, you know, something other than, maybe it's not B2, but something other than R1. It just, it's, it's just not fair to the, to the people there to, to expect that to be R1.
And Counsel President, can I just add too, as we move forward with the Greeno Road review that we've been talking about with the moratorium, I would anticipate that what you'll be seeing from the staff recommendation is an overlay district with very similar restrictions for North Greeno Road. Obviously, South Greeno Road's a little bit different because we have existing drive-throughs and, and fast food. But I think on North Greeno Road, you'll see probably something very similar to this coming out as part of our recommendation. So, you know, I know that we're, we're requesting this as part of the rezoning, but I do think as we move forward, you'll see it again.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? We'll open the public hearing now. If you would like to speak to Agenda Item Nine, request to rezone this property, if you'll please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any further questions or comments? If not, I will let this lay over to the next meeting for final consideration. Okay, that'll lay over. Item 10 is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1510, known as Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures. An ordinance regarding Section 4 Wage and Salary Administration 4.03 Employee Pay Rates, more specifically, City Building Inspector Certifications. Mr. Cortinez?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. This was, as we discussed at the work session, the previous work session that we had before tonight, we are rated by the Insurance Services Organization, ISO. One of the things that, in our last rating, that we lost points for was not having a written procedure or policy with a financial incentive for the inspectors to continue their education and continue obtaining additional certifications. So when it was introduced, the original, the original wording was 35 cents per certification, max of two per year. But there was a cap of four total that was put, that was put in the, in the ordinance. I'm asking that that be adjusted to 50 cents per certification, a max of two a year, and a total maximum of 10, because we are multi-trade inspectors, and to do everything residentially and commercially, you have to have at least eight if you're covering everything that you do. So this is something for the inspectors. This also is their method of merit raises through the year primarily. This is, this is how they do it. So they take the test, they earn it, and they get it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cortinez? Somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Hearing no questions, we'll take this into consideration and consider it the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, number 11 is a request to approve the 2019 regular city council meetings. If you'll look over the dates for those meetings, we tried to take into account the holidays and the events that we knew would interfere with our regularly scheduled city council meetings. And, you know, it's occasionally, we still have to deviate from this schedule. So if we need to change a meeting, we, we always can. We can always call special meetings as required as well. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the 2019 regular city council meetings?
Some move, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
You're not going to read them, Jack?
Pardon?
You're not going to read the dates?
No, they're in your book. You can, you can have a, would you like to read them?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Item 12 is a resolution setting a public hearing for the consideration of the adopting of the new building mechanical, plumbing, fuel, gas, fire, and electric codes to be held February 25th, 2019. Anybody have any issues with that date, other than it being my birthday? Really? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set the date for the hearing for the consideration of the adopting, adoption of the new building codes to be held on February 25th, 2019.
Some moved, second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution that the Marina Manager is hereby authorized to purchase Marina fuel. That would be marine-grade gas and diesel as needed to sell at the Fairhope docks and to establish the selling price of fuel based on the greater of, of, that's supposed to be one, not 10. One, the approved formula, or two, 5 cents lower than the retail price of the fuel of the nearest competitive Marina in the Mobile Bay Area, and hereby repeals and replaces Resolution Number 3079-18, which was adopted on May 29th, 2018. And I'll take a stab at it, Lynn. And this was just to establish a floor. We, we found out that we were so competitive, we were just beating the socks off of everybody so badly that we were losing revenue. And this basically just establishes a floor.
It's a, it's a floating floor.
Right.
Because we can't just establish a hard number.
Right.
The drop in fuel of late really showed us what, what we were doing. And it's not that we want to undercut severely our competitors. We want to remain competitive and still protect our revenue stream. And this is a change that we, we only change our prices when we get a delivery. So it's not like we are looking every single day and changing our prices. We would establish our prices on the day of delivery, and that holds until the next delivery.
Well, I believe that we had discussed, you could probably look at that weekly as well, though, and change the price of fuel as necessary.
I've, I've checked it daily since you and I talked, and nobody else has changed their prices. They haven't come down.
Right. Okay. All right. Any questions for Lynn? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
Some move, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing and consenting to the transfer of ownership, maintenance, and responsibility for portions of Kirkman Lane, Kirkman Lane North, and Taylor Street in the City of Fairhope from Baldwin County. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Sir, Counsel President, Counsel Mayor. This is a request that we received from the Baldwin County Commission to the county engineer. The three road segments described are wholly contained within the city limits, meaning that equal portions of length on each side are city limits boundaries. And they have requested that we accept those into our inventory for maintenance, and they've at least added a little bit of an incentive that the resolution would be, acceptance would be contingent upon them resurfacing those roads with the minimum, minimum of an inch and a half of new wearing prior to that action. And you have their resolution that is drafted in there that would enact such. This is relatively common when our city limits expands and we don't pick up the roadway systems in there. The code does allow the county to kind of press this issue. And, and again, I do not have any objection for us considering these small road portions, especially since they will be resurfaced. And the reality of it is, we would not have any expensive maintenance until 15 to 20 years out from that date of resurfacing.
Is that year and a half, I'm sorry, inch and a half asphalt, is that adequate, do you believe?
Yes, that's what we, that's what our development design standards, when they build new roads in neighborhoods, require. So yes, that's...
Occasionally, I hear two, so...
Okay. But for resurfacing, inch and a half is very adequate.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson, counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion to authorize and consent to the transfer of ownership, maintenance, and responsibility?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Item 15 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission regarding a roundabout at County Road 13 and County Road 44. The city will provide intersection lighting for the project at the city's expense and pay for any required costs associated with beautification upgrades to the project, including but not limited to irrigation for islands, concrete staining, and concrete stamping. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. The county has received a grant to install a roundabout at County Road 13 and County Road 44, Twin Beach Road. One of the things that that grant will not cover is intersection lighting, as well as landscaping beautification, as well as, as you know, on the two roundabouts that we've already established, we did the textured brick stamping colored concrete, stained concrete, which is really a nice look. They'll pay for the concrete, they just won't pay for the additional costs associated with the dye and the stamping. And the recommendation is that, one, we take care of the lighting. Now, it's a little different than the two former roundabouts, since this is a different service territory, meaning that we'll have to do an aid to construct with Riviera for the lighting, and that will come back to you at some future date when required. And the others, we should be able to self-form and budget accordingly in the 2020 budget, which is when that work would be required.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson, counsel? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Thank you.
Mayor Wilson, may I ask you to reach out to the Committee on Public Art or COPA? We talked about that, to get some art in these roundabouts, you know, the two now that exist, and this is a third, and then there's, you know, there's also, we're in talks to, has already been approved, the one at Saxon Street, and just thinking, you know, a permanent art display. Now, the landscaping looks great, but I think a permanent, whether it's a...
And we have, Sherry Lee and I have.
All right, I'm anxious to see something on that. I don't know about the rest of you, but I think that's Fairhope, and it'll also do a lot to help out the aesthetics east of 98, something that we get comments on quite a lot. Okay, great, thank you, Mayor. Okay, counsel, we heard from Mr. Evans prior to the agenda, ask us to table this discussion. I've also been given a note by our city attorney, asking us to table item number 16, so that we can speak to counsel regarding this item. So if somebody would like to make that motion to table this, if not, we would, we're gonna have to ask Jeff Montgomery to come in and explain to us why we desire to terminate this.
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Okay, we have a motion to table item 16 on tonight's agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of tabling the resolution, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, that's been tabled. Thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune water meters for the Water Department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply as sole source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group Incorporated. The number of units is 200, the three-quarter inch meters, it's $175 per unit, and 12 one-inch meters at $275 per unit, with a cost not to exceed $38,300. Entertain a motion to make these purchases?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 18 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase 51 pairs of Globe Supreme Leather firefighter boots for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department. The boots are available for direct procurement through the Houston-Goweston Area Council, purchasing cooperative contract, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through HGAC's bid process with a total cost of $21,165. Anybody would like the fire department to explain these boots? Or anybody wanting to do the math, that's about $500 a pair. I'm sure firefighting equipment is not cheap.
Alligator skin.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Boone, did you say something? Or was that Mr. Brown?
I said alligator skin.
Alligator skin boots? I don't think so. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, item 19 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase single-phase pad mount transformers for the Electric Department. Six each of the 25 kilovolt amps and six each of the 50 kilovolt amps, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be $21,648. Entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'm assuming you guys are looking in the back, and it's all budgeted, well below budget, right?
Yeah, I did have a question about that, I guess. I mean, is it that low, is it that far below budget because the price is that good, or we're not buying as many as we initially thought, maybe? Okay.
This is just for the single-phase pad mounts, we're just not buying, we're just, we don't want to get a whole bunch of inventory.
Okay.
Just to meet our needs that we have in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
How about the unit cost? Is the unit cost according to budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They were just, they were a little bit, all three bids that we got back were within, like, $12 of each other.
Oh, wow. It's down to a science, isn't it?
And it was the same manufacturer.
You gotta pad that by $5,000 before you run your donkey down, so you put that on the agenda, it's like, wow, it's great.
I might have to take that class.
Okay. Clark, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, you do.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, counsel. Motion carries. Item 20 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure a John Deere infield drag machine for the Rec Department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $16,896.32. We will entertain a motion for the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, this is a budgeted item. Okay, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 21 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase six Motorola portable radios, APX 6,7/800 megahertz, 1.5 for the IT department, and the type of equipment needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a total cost of $22,252.50. I guess, Jeff, if you're listening, if you could come in, I have a question for this. I guess, Jeff, these were, these are under budget, but it seems like we've been buying a lot of these kind of piecemeal lately.
Right, we split the, split it, we had, did a first year, we bought six, why, I mean, last year we bought six, this year we're purchasing another six, and that should give us the total amount of radios that we need. For, what this is for, is for emergencies. If, you know, all other communications are down, then we'll rely on these radios for communication.
Okay, and they're gonna be around for a while. They're not gonna change their towers or equipment and tell us that we need to buy 20 more in the next three years.
The county says it'll be around for a while. It's part of the county system.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? I just had to ask that, because it seems like every so often, they just keep coming up, and they're pretty expensive radios.
They are expensive.
I'll entertain a motion for the purchase of the radios?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jeff. Item 22 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to rebuild and refurbish the first responder E1 rescue truck for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department from Sunbelt Fire, as a sole source distributor and service provider for E1 products for our region, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The total cost will be $182,948.43. We did have the fire department speak to us about this in the work session. It is over budget by $27,000. However, I believe they said a new truck would be about $480, and this would buy us 20 more years, chief? Is that with you driving it?
No, not with me driving.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? I believe the chief could answer them if we need them. Okay. Hearing no further questions, counsel, I'll ask for a motion to refurbish the fire truck.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 23 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase the SCADA Systems Communications Plan through Verizon for the utilities from the General Services Administration Federal Supply Schedule Contract. For direct procurement through the GSA Buying Group Contract, is that a repeat, Lisa? Therefore, I'm just reading it as it's written here. Therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the GSA bid process, and the annual cost is $19,920. Mr. Montgomery? Just, we don't really have a choice on that, do we? We want to communicate with them, right?
Well, with this is, we currently have a plan with Verizon for our SCADA endpoints to communicate back to the SCADA system. This is a change in the contract, it's saving us about $1,600 a month. It's a new contract that Verizon came out with for, with a label, IoT devices. So I jumped on it when I found out about it, so save some money.
Good job. Okay, counsel, that's 1,600, let's see, $1,459, $59 per month savings, per month. Any questions for Jeff? Okay, we will entertain a motion to purchase the SCADA Systems Communication Plan through Verizon.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 24 is a resolution to approve the procurement of the FY 2019 annual flower plantings for the Public Works Department in the amount of $128,972.44. I will entertain a motion to purchase the flowers?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Flowers are... $23,562 below budget, is that because of quantity, or we get a, we get a good buy on them, or what?
And I don't want to mess this up, but basically, like, for the flowers that are going in the ground today, they were actually, had to be bought off of last year's budget. So this is just looking ahead for our next, through the budget year, so, you know...
Nine months.
Yeah, so that's probably part of the savings, because I know when we kind of were doing, when we finally budgeted the flowers out separately, we had to handle it a little differently, so we're probably catching up, and even though we overran a year ago, we're underrunning this year, so... But we're in favor of the flowers.
Good explanation. Less the 5,000 that you overbudgeted. Really, that's really 18,000.
Very good plug, that was good.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the annual flower plantings?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I just want to say that I think that this is one investment in the city that pays us back for certain. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 25 is a resolution to award an RFQ for tent rentals for New Year's Eve 2018 to Blue Rents with a total proposal of $10,535.14. And boy, I hope we award this, since they've already put them up and taken them back down this year. And we're probably gonna get stuck with that bill. I'll entertain a motion to award the request for...
So moved.
Can I get a second?
You got one.
Oh, did I get a second? Okay, I thought I heard two motions. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Item 26 is an application for a nonprofit tax-exempt license or an alcoholic beverage license by the Protestant Episcopal Church and the Diocese of the Central Gulf Coast Incorporated, doing business as St. James Episcopal Church for the annual Dio Season Convention on February 25, 119. We're a little late for that. We're a thousand years off, late that 2019. From 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM at the James P. Nick Center located at 1 Bayou Drive, Fairhope, Alabama. So our code adoption meeting will be somewhere in this building and not at the Nick Center, right? That's the same night? Just making sure. I'm sure it's not.
2:15 or 2:25?
Both of them say 2:25.
The event is, is 2, February 15.
Okay, well, then we got two dates wrong on there. It's February the 15, 2019, not February 25, 1019.
They just transpose the one and the...
Okay, you probably did a copy and paste there, Lisa. Need to get some sleep, girl. All right, I'm glad we caught that, then. See, there, sticking around pays off, doesn't it?
That's right.
All right. All right, so that would be February the 15, 2019, from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM. All right, counsel, I entertain a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Chief, is there any reason to deny this application?
Other than it's in the wrong century?
I was about to say, other than, it's Bruce this spring before.
I was waiting for that. Okay. All those in favor of approval of the application, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Did you just vote on that, Jimmy?
I guess, am I supposed to abstain, or we're gonna...
Well, I don't know. Are you getting a benefit there?
I probably won't be there, I'm not invited, I don't think.
If you're getting a free drink, maybe not, I don't know.
I don't think I'll be invited.
You're in trouble. All right, item 27 is an application for a nonprofit...
Thank you.
If that was the case, if that was the case, we would never be able to vote on the steak cook-off or anything else, so... I could. That's true. They're not gonna give me a free drink. Not a quorum, though. Item 27 is an application for a nonprofit tax-exempt license or an alcoholic beverage